Good evening and thank you all for being here. Do we have a volunteer to lead the pledge? And Sally's got our flag. Thank you very much, Sally.
Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United Nations and to the Republic
Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God,
Under God
indivisible,
indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sally. I don't know why the pledge seems so much harder when we do it this way. Yeah. Harder to stay in time with each other. So I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Two of our board members are absent this evening, but that leaves us with three board members, which still gives us a quorum so we can continue with board business. Per the Governor's proclamation and in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Dr. Apostle has a few words about the scope of boards' actions during this time.
Well, I think that's been eliminated, Sandy.
It has.
I don't think until, I thought it went until July 1.
The pub, we can do virtual meetings, but they no longer have to be what is
Essential.
Essential and limited. Okay.
That has changed.
Things change quick.
Have board members had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes. I move that we approve the agenda for June 23rd.
I second.
All righty, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. At this point in time, we'll enter the first community comment period. There is a second comment period toward the end of the meeting. The board welcomes input from the public. And please include your name and address where they're calling with or emailing your comments. Each person is allowed three minutes to speak. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the board is not allowed to discuss items that are not on the agenda. And we may refer any items that arise to the superintendent for follow-up. The board will not allow complaints against an individual staff member or student in open session unless that individual has requested an open public hearing. So do we have any community comments at this time?
There is nothing in the mailbox at this time.
All righty, thank you. So we can move on to reports and recognitions. There continues to be much effort going on behind the scenes during these unusual times, and this is our chance to report on some of these activities. We have recognition by Kelly Neely for community outreach staff. Kelly?
Thank you, Sandy. So I would really like to recognize Betty, you, Ricardo de Basque, Jefferson Doyle, and Jean Fairbrother. As I've been talking to you all, I've shared that we've done a lot to help our community during this time. And these four people have really stepped forward and done some amazing things. I believe they're all here. While I'm looking for the pictures I want to share with you, could I have Betty? Are you there, Betty? You're muted, Betty.
Yes, I'm muted.
Betty, can you just tell everyone what you've been up to with that $20,000 and our other funds?
Well, just to talk a little bit about when COVID started, Jefferson and I have been working really hard on finding ways to continue to support our community. We knew that they were going to be facing a lot of struggles with opening, I mean, with closing the school. He started a fundraiser that we received a lot, a lot of community support. A lot of donation from the, from Shelton High School staff. We started by creating some boxes for families that were reaching out to us. We need, but I really want to say that everything that we have done wouldn't be possible without the support of all the people that have stepped up. Like Bill Hutchinson, Hannah Megan, Wendy and Michaela, Ricardo, Rosemary, Heather Kolaszka, but High School has also created a team of people that wants to help us with the hygiene products for our families. So they created small teams to provide the support and all of the meal distribution sites. We started just with, it was like 15 boxes a week, and it went up to 55 per week. We were serving about 100, 110 families every two weeks. We started with our fundraiser funds. Then we, Billy Chink just sent out an email about, you know, a grant that was available, and I was like, let's just apply for it. Let's, let's, let's do this. We knew that we had the money that we have raised, but it wasn't going to be enough. And we wanted to continue this throughout the summer. And we were able to obtain that 20,000 grand that we're planning to be able to use during the summer. We have been able to use some of our McKinney event funds to be able to do the food program at this time. And we have also spent all the money from our fundraiser. Now we're ready to start using that 20 grand that will provide building assistance, gas vouchers, and we will continue to do our food program for the families that are in need.
Thank you, Betty. Ricardo, do you want to talk about your bus that's up there? Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Yes, well, we've been using the bus with help the program that Betty and Jefferson start. And we use the bus, the bus start recreating, people start recognizing the bus in the community. And so I've been counting how many miles of service the, the bus has been doing in this, in these weeks. So far it's like 700 miles.
Wow.
In a few weeks. And we got a couple of times donations from our partner in Federal Way, World Vision. And we got 800 boxes, the products. They come apples, onions, potatoes. And we distribute it in all the schools. And the community love these boxes. I tell staff, come on, take a box, the apples and onions and potatoes. And it's beautiful, beautiful products. They just came fresh from Eastern Washington. And they call us, come and get it. And we go get it early in the morning, at six o'clock in the morning and put it in the truck. Maintenance facility, they brought us a big box truck to go get the four pallets of products. And we delivered in all the schools and it's been so good. And I know the, the bus is going to be as a really good opportunity. We could connect with the community where the family does not have a transportation. We deliver in packets, information from the schools, information from the district office, like a surveys. And family love to see the bus. It's so funny, kids see the bus in the streets and waving you. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity we have. And we have a couples of the Spanish community families getting positive with the coronavirus for so far they're doing okay. Now they, okay, they're clear, I keep being in touch with these families and they say they're fine. So, so far it's okay. This is a good thing, having this resource in the community.
Thank you, Ricardo. Take care of that bus.
Yes.
Um, Jean Fairbrother, would you like to pipe in with how you've been helping?
Well, I'm just honored to be able to support our staff. We have a very creative, energetic staff that it just amazes me how much they do, how much their outreach is to our community. And it's an honor to back you all up with anything to do with the finance pieces, all the background work. It's an honor to step up and do whatever I can, and it's different every day. I love it.
Thank you. And the last person that we have is Jefferson Doyle. Jefferson is our McKinney Vento Unaccompanied Youth Liaison. And Jefferson is leaving us. So Jefferson, how about if you talk about the kids that you've been helping, what you've been doing? And we're going to just miss you so much. Jefferson? I saw him there. Are you still with us?
You're muted, Jefferson.
There. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, cool. I can echo what Betty and Ricardo were saying about the program as far as like during COVID and how we started this emergency food response. And also wanted to mention specifically that there's a, like an emergency hygiene response, which was figuring out the best way to get students and families hygiene supplies they needed, you know, basic stuff, right? We're talking about toilet paper, we're talking about like laundry detergent, all these things. So I do want to highlight this thing that is when COVID happened, the percentage of the student body that was, in my view, was most affected was in fact our undocumented families. Because as soon as these stimulus bills started coming in and as soon as people started collecting unemployment, our undocumented families were for the most part left out of that. And so there's like a serious amount of hunger happening. And so it's kind of like, these programs were really exciting to do, and they were driven by students coming to me and Betty and Ricardo being like, hey, this is actually what we need, right? And so like, my job as the unaccompanied liaison at the high school has always been to essentially make such good relationships with the students that they feel comfortably telling me what their needs are. Instead of me being like, oh, I know what the unaccompanied kids need, you know, we can do this, that, and the other, and create a bunch of like programs that don't necessarily work. Or we can listen to the students and their stated needs and build our programming around that. And that's why I think that our program was so successful this year. And looking back, when I first started, right, three years ago, our graduation rate in like the 2017, 18 year was, you know, hovering around 55%, I believe. And then the next year, right, last year, it was about 75%. So there's a big 20% jump last year. And then this year, I think we're poised to crest over 80 or 85%, which is the same graduation rate as the housed peers. So that's kind of amazing. And I think that it's important to recognize like this team that I work with. And there are like really practical reasons why students at SHS who are experiencing housing instability, experiencing homelessness, why they are in fact making it through to the other side. There are practical and tangible ways that we have adopted to do that, which is like harm reduction, creating a space where students feel seen and heard, trusting them when they, you know, talk about their lives. And basically like interacting with the counselors, teachers, and admin staff and discipline, getting everyone involved, testing coordinators, Angie Gorley, like all of these people. I'm going to miss so much because the more that we communicate as a high school across disciplines and across our different departments, in the end, the more communication equals the more students getting what they need. And yeah, I could go on for like a half an hour about all the cool stuff that happens here at SHS. But I just wanted to say that. And then I'm going to miss the team. And I really appreciate the opportunity to have been a part of this community and hopefully I'll be back.
Well, thank you, Jefferson. We, you're going to be a hard one to replace. You've done so much for our kids and our community. I, I want to thank the whole team also. And thank you to Alex and the board for letting me recognize these folks. They have been working tirelessly. They get phone calls at night, phone calls on the weekend. They, they do whatever they need to do to reach our most needy folks. So thank you so much. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, from, certainly want to thank Kelly for bringing this forward and for recognizing all these people and for all the work that they've done. And there's a lot of other unsung heroes too. Everybody's pulling together and doing a lot of great things behind the scenes. So any other comments from board members? Alex? Dr. Apostle?
Anything, board members may have something first.
I just want to say thank you. Yeah, thank you for all your efforts with our students.
It's just really inspiring to hear of all the great work that's being done. And we know our students can't truly be productive students unless all the basic needs are met as well. And so to, to have this great outreach and pouring of concern that I know that they feel is it's it's really, I know it's appreciated by the families, but it shows throughout the whole community. It goes a long, long ways. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Apostle?
Yes, thank you, Sandy. I know COVID-19 has been difficult for all of us. And what's been expressed this evening is a tremendous effort by the team of people that were introduced. But I must say that a lot of these things continued on prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. Ricardo and Betty and many others were out there helping everybody that they could with what they had. Ricardo came to me about buying a bus. And, you know, money's tight, but we found a bus, as you saw. And that bus is going to really provide a lot of service to our families and to our kids. And it's a great idea to continue to reach out to, to our people. So tremendous effort. And I want to just express my deepest gratitude and admiration for what you're, what you're doing and what you've done in the past too. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Next, we'll move on to the budget update. This will be the 2020, 2021 school year budget. Okay, Brenda?
Yeah. Good evening. I have my window open, so I apologize if we get any noise, but I needed to cool down in there a little bit. So as you know, we are working on budget. The school board and Alex and Linda and I have been meeting every Thursday, late afternoon to work our way through the budget this year. It's been a good process, very clear, I believe, except for that we don't know what the state is going to do to us for budget. But we have our ideas, so that's a good thing. We are classified as a first-class school district because we have over 2,000 students enrolled. So our budget is due to the ESD on July 10th. That includes all funds, transportation vehicle fund, capital projects, debt service, private purpose trust fund, and associated student body funds. I've been starting to get some of the ASP funds and the building budgets from people this week. So that's helping me a lot. I can start getting those in. With the board, we have been looking at lots of different scenarios. We are anticipating a possible budget reduction from the state. We don't know when because as you've heard, they have a very large deficit due to COVID. So we've looked at several scenarios. We started with a 3.6% scenario, which is a little over $2 million. We have a 7% reduction, that's $4.4 million. A 10% reduction that is right at $6.4 million, 15%, which is $9.6 million. And the highest is 16.5%, which is 10.7. So we are looking at all those very closely to try and determine where we think the state will go. The basic ed funding is 96% of what we get from the state. There's a 4% that is not basic ed that we get from the state. So there is a possible chance that that could be reduced. And the majority of that is our levy equalization dollars. So we need to prepare for that. And that's really all I have right now. Tammy Ford and I are busy inputting into the Westpac system, behind the scenes, trying to get all the funds put together so that we can get a budget submitted to the ESD on July 10th. We also have to have a document that we allow the public to pick up that same day. So that's all I have. Alex, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I really do. Thank you, Brenda. Our, our main objective in public education is to establish great programs that motivate and inspire students. And the board has indicated to me that one of their major issues is that we continue the direction that we're currently on in our school district. And so in terms of budget, we're a people business. And without our staff, that, that definitely affects the programs that we can offer. So we're being very careful to not react too quickly without having all the information from the state. And so we're being very cautious because every single staff member in our school district is very important to us because they are the ones that support the overall direction of our school district. So we're being very careful not to jump the gun and tell people that they don't have a job. We don't want to do that. And so we are awaiting direction from the state. And basically what Brenda said is the information that we have right now, that they're saying that based on the state constitution, we're going to be funded at 96% with that 4% being held in, in abey. We'll see how all that works. We'll be reporting on, on the budget again on June 30th at our open forum. And hopefully we'll have additional information. But I just want everyone to know that we want to continue the great programs that we have in our district, and they won't continue without the great people that we have in our district. So we're being very, again, very careful before we announce any cuts of any kind in terms of staffing. Because when we cut staff, we cut program, and we don't want to do that. So hopefully the state is giving us good direction and that we're going to be in good shape. Thank you.
Comments from other board members? Carrie or Sally?
I would just say this is a complex situation, and I'm glad that we are meeting weekly to go over this. I know that sometimes people have questions about why we have to have our budget submitted on July 10th. And as Brenda has told us several times, that's state law. So there is no way to push off that date and wait for additional information that we might want the state to give us until the legislature decides to meet. And they may be meeting later on in the year. So we have to come up with different plans and submit what we think is the best plan. And, and it's, it's made even more complicated looking at what next school year might look like with additional cleaning, with different types of instructional models going on. So this has taken a lot of thought and planning. And we're, we are very much trying to protect our programs for our kids and put them at the forefront of all of this planning. Sally, I don't know if you had anything?
Guess that, um, yeah, we're taking everything into consideration, looking at the needs and with pretty much a moving target. With all of the COVID, we don't have any idea where things are going. But maintaining and having good programs. We had a WADA meeting last Friday night. And again, expecting a special session for the legislature to, to address what's going on in our state. But absolutely no idea when or what, you know? So again, taking our responsibilities very seriously, that we need to look after the best interest of our kids and our families in our communities in the best way possible.
Thank you very much. Sally and Carrie, I think you guys have summed it up very well. Thank you, Brenda, for that report. And we do appreciate, I know it takes extra time to keep running all the different scenarios, but until we have as much information as possible, we kind of need to work on all of those to figure out which one is going to serve our needs the best. So thank you for that extra work and making that happen. Any further comments? All righty, at this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Have board members had a chance to review the consent agenda? These are items that are considered routine and usually without need of much discussion. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll move along to the discussion and action items. We have a lot of items for discussion tonight, although there's really only one item that will ultimately have action this evening. So we'll start first off with the demographic study committee status with Linda Arnold, please.
Good evening, everybody. In mid-February, I began research on how to conduct a boundary survey or a demographic study to, one, assess the current status of the number of students who fall within our neighborhood, the neighborhood boundaries of our schools. And two, provide demographical information to help in future decision-making regarding the balancing of student populations within our boundaries. Once a study is conducted, a committee will be formed to analyze the results of the study and make a recommendation for action steps, if any were to be needed. I hoped to have the survey complete by now, but this thing called COVID happened and has delayed the process. I, prior to COVID, I was in touch with ESD 113, excuse me, darn allergies. And they work with a company out of Bellevue to provide demographic studies, including boundary studies for school districts. I've reconnected with them with ESD 113, or I should say, I've attempted, I know they were very busy. I've attempted to reconnect with them to get more information regarding the process, the timelines, and the cost. So I'm awaiting a reply from them. It's possible that they are not back in business. I know ESD is back in business, but I don't know if the company, I think it's called Samamish Data Services, something like that. But I will keep you in touch as soon as I hear from them. And we're ready to move forward on that study.
Okay.
Sandy, you're muted.
Thank you. Any, any comments from other board members or questions? Okay, anybody else? All righty, we'll move on to 6.02. The grading committee status with Bob Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me have a chance to update you quickly here tonight. I've addressed you once before with this committee. And in the fall of 2019, Dr. Apostle approached and said we should start a committee to look at district grading practices. And it's something that had not been reviewed for a long time. And there was a need for some clarity and consistency in this area across the district. And so one of the first things we did, we wanted to make sure that there's some understanding that the goal of this committee is not to try and force all staff to do everything the same way. But it is to use best practices and ensure that our grades represent student achievement and not other things that sometimes get lumped into grades. Now, when OSPI released their guidance just a few days ago, one of the issues that they wanted addressed were grading practices. And so we've been a little bit ahead of the game. And this is a good opportunity to kind of reframe our system and make sure that our practices truly do represent what we know now as best practices in the area of grading. So the first thing we did was conducted an anonymous survey with the teaching staff. And we asked five questions. First was what grade band did they teach? The second was how confident are they that the grade students receive in The second was how confident are they that the grades students receive in their classroom were consistent, accurate and meaningful? The third was how confident are you the grades students receive in your classroom support student learning? The fourth question was how confident are you that the grades you assign to students accurately reflect our district's published content standards? And the last question was how confident are you that our building or grade band is consistent and representative of student achievement along with those published content standards? And then there was a spot for other comments as well. We got results from a hundred and eighty-eight teachers showed a wider range, I think, than we expected on their comfort and confidence in both their own grading practices and what they perceived was going on around the district. Some grade bands were quite varied in their responses. Others were a little bit more cohesive. But it again, just sort of reinforced the need to be taking a look in this area. So at that point, a committee was established to look at our current practices, to look at best practices, and to come forward with some recommendations as we move ahead. We wanted to keep the size of the group manageable and still include representation from each building, each grade band and special programs. Pretty much everybody on the committee was able to represent more than one group. So we'd have a special ed teacher who was also a O M S teacher, for instance, so they could represent the building as well as special ed. We ended up with twelve on our committee, and we did get a good representation across the district. And we set our schedule, which was to meet six times from February through June. And as we all know, those plans didn't follow through quite the way that we had hoped. We did meet in February and March as scheduled, and those were in-person meetings. But with the closure of schools and the retooling of what had to happen with the rest of the school district, our schedule was put on hold for a short time. We did start meeting again in May, and we will have our total of six meetings, but they're going to be stretched out a little bit into the summer. We will be able to stay on our overall schedule for what we hope to accomplish this year, which was centered around a book study on best practices in grading. The book that we chose is called A Repair Kit for Grading Fifteen Fixes for Broken Excuse me, Broken Grades by Ken O'Connor, who is an expert in grading practices. And some of the things that the fifteen fixes include, many of them are don'ts rather than do's. But things like don't include student behavior in grading, don't give extra credit, don't consider attendance, don't reduce scores because of late work, don't reduce grades for academic dishonesty. And each, there are a number of others as well. And each of those areas, he also has some suggestions of how you deal with those issues. The key point is that you want to remain focused that our grades are to represent student achievement. And attendance is a little different animal than student achievement is, as is academic dishonesty. There are other ways to address those issues. There are other ways to address if a student has late work. And it does not necessarily reflect that they don't understand the content. So I have to admit that as I looked at the fifteen fixes, most of those were things that at some point in my almost thirty years in the classroom I had used in my grading practices. And I'd feel really guilty about that, except that when I first started, those were not only my practices, but district and building and department practices that were taught to me and were just common, I think, throughout education. And so we have some paradigm shifting to be doing in some of these areas. And I'm sure it'll generate some good discussion. Grading can be a fairly emotional issue at times when you start talking about the nuts and bolts of it. So our plan moving forward is that after we finish the book study, which will be done before the start of the school year, the upcoming school year, we will enlarge to a little bit wider discussion group. We'll have input from more than just the twelve on our committee. And the goal is to put together a document of what grading represents in the school district and what shouldn't shouldn't be certain things that best practices indicate should be included in students' overall grades. The document will need to be somewhat flexible. Different grade levels have different needs and different consequences. Grades mean different things, for instance, at the high school level than they do at the elementary level as far as what the student takes with them from those grades or what sort of consequences come from certain grades. Our goal is to be finished with this work with recommendations by the spring of twenty twenty-one. And so we hope to have those guidelines together and ready to go. And then the last thing, again, Superintendent Rakedall in O S P I's guidance document, one of the statements that he made is that now is the time for school leaders and educators to make grades meaningfully aligned to fewer specific standards, combined with feedback to give students multiple opportunities to demonstrate their learning and put homework and extra credit in its proper place. Now is the time to decouple behavior and compliance activities from assessing student learning. And ultimately, that's really what our goal is here. Any questions?
Questions from board members? Carrie, Sally? Yes, I have a couple of questions about, you know, when it's going to be on your page, the plan moving forward, and when you're going to solicit input from a wider group across the district. How and how are we going to recruit from that group or invite that wider group? And more specifically, when? I have a feeling there may be people that would like to weigh in on this discussion.
Sure. So one of the groups we would take this to initially would probably be the principals and building administrators. That would be kind of a starting place. We would also open up then to teacher input. I'm not sure what the format would be at this point. It's going to kind of depend on where we're at as far as what sorts of meetings or what sorts of things we can do. And for the plan moving forward, again, our goal was to be done by the end of next spring. Planning at this point obviously is very flexible. And so we may need to be flexible there as well.
So is there any plan to include families or parents in the grading conversation?
To be honest, we haven't had that discussion yet within our group. That may be appropriate, and we can take a look at that as we continue moving forward.
Or any input from students? And that's even one of the things on the list of don'ts. Don't forget to, don't leave your students out of the process. Get some input from, I don't know, A S B leaders or, you know, class leaders on how they feel this would impact.
That that also could be appropriate. It there, there's kind of a line in my mind, and the committee may decide that I'm off base here, and I'm open to that as well. But there are certain things that the educator as a professional kind of needs to make the decisions on. And there are certain things that are more appropriate for a wider spread net to be cast. And so this, this one, I I can see the argument on both sides or the discussion coming from both sides. Ultimately, the evaluation is part of what the teacher's job is. And we want to make sure that we keep that not as a, like, up to just a common vote sort of thing.
Any other questions or comments? Guess I have another one about the attendance. You know, we've had such a, you made the statement about attendance doesn't necessarily equate to student achievement. But we do recognize that low attendance can put someone at risk for graduation. And graduation seems like that would be a student achievement. So I'd be curious to see how the committee goes about choosing to deal with attendance. You know, we have attendance matters, a graduation matters. That may be an interesting wrinkle to iron out.
Well, I think they're really two different things. Really, they really are. Attendance is very, very important. But when you're, when you're giving your grades out and you're saying, okay, is this student going to get an A, B, or C or lower? There are some practices where ten percent, I've even seen it like broken down into twenty-five percent of this, twenty-five percent of that, like homework, attendance, and those things in an overall grade. And is that really academic achievement? So there's some very academic things here that we're looking at. I'm really glad that we are looking deep into this because I think it's been an issue in our education system for a long time. And so are we taking things like attendance and behavior out of putting a letter grade associated to a child takes judgment out? I mean, that is, sometimes that's really, you're putting the judgment on a person that maybe things are happening in their life somewhere else that they don't have control over, and you're putting that letter grade to them. So I'm really glad that we're looking at this from these angles. And it does take that professional to to have that background and to have read and digested lots of studies over this area to say, how do we serve our our students in the best way?
And Sally or Sandy, if I could just add on to what Sally said, I think she nailed it there. But we've had grading practices at times during my career where if you miss ten days, you automatically fail the class, things like that, regardless of what the student's skill level and ability level was. And so those, those sorts of things are just, I think, egregious misuse of grades to try and control behaviors. And we're trying to separate behaviors from student achievement.
Right, we may take it out of the realm of its applicability in a grading situation, but we're still going to need to address it because it can still be an indication that they're going to, somebody may struggle because of poor attendance. Or somebody may know the material well enough that they can be gone for periods of time and still know the material. There's still lots of other questions and whatnot. The
And it absolutely is an indicator that we would continue to track and that has all sorts of ramifications throughout our system. But there are ways to deal with it other than reducing the student's grade.
Can you talk a little more about the reduced grades for academic dishonesty? What is that encompass?
So if a student turns in somebody else's work, for instance, so whether it's plagiarism or if they're copying off someone's paper or what, whatever the case may be. Typically, in the past, consequence has been you take a zero for this assignment. What you really want to make sure happens is that you have a good representation of what that student actually can do. And so the natural consequence is actually to have the student do the work themselves and do it under conditions that maybe are a little more monitored or in a way that you get a true reflection of what their ability is. If I give a student a zero because they have some poor judgment or have something to learn about just the importance of academic honesty, it can cause their grade to be impacted in ways that doesn't necessarily, again, reflect what their ability and achievement is.
So it's not so much about giving them a pass on it as it is about making them go back and do it again with appropriate supervision to make sure that they don't engage in academic dishonesty a second time?
That, so that's, yes, that's my viewpoint on it again. That's something the committee may have different views on, so I don't want to speak for everybody. But, yeah, the natural consequence for not turning assignments in or for turning in someone else's work is to actually have the student do the work. That's what, that's the goal we want out of this. And then we have actual evidence of what their ability is from that.
Which would then lead into the other one about don't, don't reduce marks for late work. Because if they're having to redo something, let's say, in the instance of for academic dishonesty, if they're redoing it, obviously, it's going to be turned in late. And so hence, that's the rationale for the statement about don't reduce work, don't reduce marks for late work.
Correct.
Would that be correct?
There are other ways to address those sorts of issues. Academic dishonesty is more of a discipline issue perhaps than a grading issue. And so you'd want to keep it out of that realm.
Okay, all right. Out of curiosity, how many other books or studies or, you know, were researched before you decided on this particular book? Before the committee decided on this particular book?
We looked at three or four. I don't have my materials here to tell you what the titles were of those. But this one kind of went to the heart of the matter in a relatively concise way and also came with some recommendations for things like district policies and and ways to fix if these were problems within your, your grading systems.
Okay, yeah, the policies will be interesting because I'll bet we won't have necessarily WASD model policies on that. So I know that's not your area of expertise, just thinking out loud here about the policies that we'll have to work with to affect changes. Any other questions or comments from other board members?
I don't have any other questions. I feel like if there's additional questions with this, maybe that could be a more of a one-off conversation. I know we've got fourteen items we've got to get through tonight. It seems like we're spending an awful lot of time on something that maybe you might want to spend some time talking to Bob about.
And I think some of the other ones will go a little faster, too. Anything else from Sally? Nope, okay, alrighty, moving on to six.
Sandy, may I say something?
Absolutely.
Move through the agenda, but I think it's important. This is a very, very important committee. Bob, I'd like to ask you a question. I think I know the answer. When was the last time that our district examined a grading?
Well, this is my twentieth year here, and I'm not aware of it having been done before.
Yeah, this, this hasn't been done for an awful long time. And it can be a very controversial issue because what you're doing is your, you could, in fact, impact academic freedom. And there will be many opinions on that as we move through this committee. And the reason I asked Bob to extend the timeline into the spring of two thousand twenty-one is because this is a very complex and opinionated area. And so when you're talking about grading, we also need to bring into place standards-based grading, project-based grading. And maybe we shy away from the traditional A, B, C, D, F grading system. And I'm hoping that the committee will explore other variations of evaluating student achievement. And I'm hoping that the committee will explore other variations of evaluating student achievement. So this, this is a very powerful committee that will have impact on, on our entire system. And it's been well, way overdue in terms of examining grading and evaluation of student work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, move on to the Professional Development Committee status, I think. Linda Arnold's gonna give us the update on that.
Yes, I will. And, and I'll try to make this pretty quick, but I wanted to. To give you some background, just to get us all on the same page here of why we even. Develop this committee to start with. So here's a little bit of background. One, there's never been a systemic professional development or PD plan in Shelton School District that is coordinated with budget. Inclusive of certificated and classified staff, measures impact and utilizes an efficient calendar. There has never been a PD plan that requires all PD to directly support a vision. Two, the cost to provide professional development over the past five years has been, was. A little over four million dollars, including subcosts. Three, student test scores and graduation rates were not increased proportionately to the resources spent on PD. Over the past ten years. Four, student achievement is greatly impacted when staff members are absent. Over a two-year period, seven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and two thousand eighteen, nineteen. We had over ten thousand hours of teachers out of the classroom, and that was just for trainings, conferences, meetings. And then number five, staff efficiency and effectiveness are affected when professional development is not scheduled in a coordinated. Useful and timely fashion. That's the background. And therefore, last winter, the Professional Development Committee comprised of several. Various stakeholders established a three-year PD plan, which included the following. I'll give you five more numbers here. The PD plan includes parameters for any and all PD that's offered. And that, by the way, is on page three of your plan. I did include it in your packet just for your review. The pa, the plan includes yearly priorities for any PD offered. This coming year, the, the committee established two priorities under which all PD must fall. And those priorities for the two thousand twenty-one school year are school climate and safety and instructional practices. The plan also includes an efficient scheduling process to track what's being offered in the district. It includes an effective request, review, and approval process. And finally, an evaluation system to assess the effectiveness of trainings was developed. So as you probably recall, the plan was presented to the school board in February. And again, the plan is in your packet. As mentioned, the request, review, and approval process for PD was established by the committee. And so currently, we, and by we, I mean Kelly's office and Sarah. Are working on putting it online and developing an online calendar. So that all requests can be linked to, and they can be linked and tracked according to what's being done. So in summary, this plan puts a structure in place for a comprehensive professional development system. That is goal and vision-oriented, fiscally sound, and effectively managed. And that's my summary.
Thank you.
Questions from board members?
No questions from me.
None, okay. I know we were looking at, in the board packet, it talks about. The average that we spent per year before and. Developing a plan to have a little bit less, you know, we have to reduce that as part of. The plan, the overall budget plan as well. Will that goal also include subcosts?
Brenda, can you speak to how that works in your budget planning?
So as we look at the cost of. The professional development, our goal is to reduce, like Linda said, the time that the teachers are out of the classroom. So that in hand should reduce the substitute costs. So we will look at reducing those in the budget too, so.
I guess my question is more, if we say we're gonna have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars for professional development, is that. Specifically, professional development, whatever conferences or courses or whatever? Or does that five hundred thousand also have to include the subcosts? For teachers or whoever to go to those.
That typically, when we did the numbers for the committee, that did include the substitute costs. So that would be my take on it, that the five hundred thousand should include. Subcosts, cuz we're hoping they're not going to be out of the classroom. So there shouldn't be. That should be mostly professional development cost.
Okay, alright, thank you. Very good. Yes?
Yes, the other thing I should mention is that with the reopening of our schools. And based on the plan that we utilize to reopen our schools, the needs in terms of professional development. May need to be adjusted. And we may have to spend more money, if we have it, to retrain our teachers as far as, for example, remote learning. What the traditional classroom is going to look like, because the traditional classroom is not gonna be the traditional classroom that we're all. Accustomed to. It's going to change also. So. There are a few questions. I think that Linda's done a very, very good job, along with Brenda in. Kind of developing a vision of professional development, so with that, when people are trained. That is going to have an impact on the vision of our school district, which is making sure that all students graduate. But again, these are unprecedented times. And we may have to adjust. Our direction as far as professional development to ensure that we are training our teachers in terms of the new model of reopening our schools.
And may I add, Alex, that the, the beauty of this structure is no matter what is thrown our way. It all fits within this structure. No matter what we do, it, it goes by parameters. And it's vision and goal directed. So it's, it's a great plan, if I don't mind saying. And we had great people on the committee and great minds. It's a great plan that will allow us to adjust as we need to. Even in the budget portion of it.
I, I ask that these three committees be initiated for one purpose, and that's to enhance. Our direction and our, to support our vision of one hundred percent graduation. And when, when we stopped school on March thirteenth, that hurt us. There's no question. But. The three chair people that are responsible for these committees, or I should say two. Are going to march forward and fine tune these plans in relation to our reopening of schools plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, we'll move on to the report from the Subcommittee on Student Staff and Family Social Emotional Needs and Support. Think we have Mary Ann and Suzie?
Thank you, thank you, Sandy. So on June eighteenth, which was last Thursday, our committee. Met for the second time. And the focus of that meeting was to go through the surveys that the district sent out for both students and families. And staff. So we spent time going through each of the questions with. After we went through that survey, the primary focus, focus of our group was primarily around supports and accessibility. And I feel strongly that when we come forward to the board, we are going to have. Some. Some great ideas on how to make those supports accessible, not only with what is available here in the Shelton School District. District, cuz we are doing great things in the Shelton School District, but also what is out in Mason County? What is available in our community? So that was the two main focus was the survey, supports, and accessibility. And so what, we feel confident that we are gonna be ready to bring to the board some recommendations and ideas of how to move forward. But more importantly, the topic around social emotional learning. As it regards to staff and families and students, that is ongoing, regardless of whether it's COVID or not. This is a topic that's ongoing, and we would like to see continue as we move forward in the Shelton School District. And I'd like to hand it over to Suzie Worsicki and see if she has anything to add.
I don't, in specific, I'm, I very much appreciate the idea that we're gathering up resources that are already in place. And then we're gonna empower our students and our families and our teachers to access them. And then I think we have structures within our schools, when the MTSS teams, that will make it a, a conversation about how that team can then take this information to. Our committee's a little bit different that way. So, because our committee is, is about. The being of the people that are doing the work. I am just increasingly concerned about the impact of. What this is gonna be like on our, the mental health of our students. The more I read, the more concerned I get, the more I'm working. With myself as a school counselor to say, how do I get ready to, to respond to these needs and how do I work in a preventative manner? So I appreciate this committee a lot.
Thank you.
And I appreciate not reinventing the wheel when there are community resources that we can use. Other comments or questions from anyone else? Board members? Dr. Apostle?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Next up is the Subcommittee on Remote Learning and Traditional Model. Instruction.
Thank you, Sally. We've also been meeting weekly right after Mary Ann's group. It's been a lot, lot of fun there. But I have, I have such a wonderful group. It's amazing. I just went over my list again to see how many I'm up to. I have forty-eight people. Which is awesome. And just as a reminder, we have parents, teachers, tech folk, tribal reps, union reps, students. Special ed teachers, school board members, principals, preschool, PE, parents, community members. A gear-up person, counselors, somebody from academies, somebody from HR, somebody from curriculum. We've got it covered. It's been really nice to actually hear everybody's point of view, because everybody's looking for something different. The last meeting that we had. I did some polls, which were really interesting to me. The one that. The first one that we did that I really wanna share with everybody is. What is the largest obstacle we face with the, with the models that we're looking at for going back to school? And the number one thing that came up was childcare, because if we have to go to alternating. Days or anything like that, what are the parents going to do with their kiddos when they're not in school? And what are teachers going to do with their kiddos when they're not in school? And then the other things, the other two things that were super close. Were. Reaching all stu, oh, I got that backwards. Reaching all students with equity, that was the top one. Which everybody's super concerned about, because it is hard to reach all kids. Then childcare and stress on the families were the next two. That were up. By far, seventy-one percent for reaching all students and fifty-seven and fifty-four percent for stress on students and childcare. Then when we looked at our different models, we had a rotating days, we had rotating weeks. We had phased in an all-distance learning. Most folks, seventy-nine percent of the people on our committee. Really preferred the rotating days, where we would be two days on with half the class. A day for deep cleaning and online learning, and then the other two days. The other half of the kids would be there. And then the days that were off, the kids would be doing distance learning. So that, that seemed to come out on ours. What we're waiting for, though, is the whole district picture from the survey. To see how closely we match what everybody from the community, the parents, the families, the students, the teachers are all saying. As soon as we get that information back, then we're going to try to match it with which, with what we feel. I've gone over it with them several times. It's not up to our committee to decide when we get to go back. Or really, how we get to go back. It, it's up to this, the Health Department, Alex and the school board. So, you know, we'll make our recommendations to y'all. And then. It'll be right up there, whether we're back full-time, face-to-face, we're back with a blended model, or we can't come back at all for a while. So I'm hoping, hoping, hoping that we have enough community members, parents, families, students, teachers. Replying to our survey so that we feel comfortable, that we've really reached who we think we're reaching. And hopefully, next Thursday, we can come up with our recommendation to send out to you. So. That's where we are.
Alrighty, thank you. Questions or comments from board members or other members? Nope?
I, I listen to Kelly's meetings each Thursday. I've, I've listened in on the last two, and I know Sally was on that one as well too. And I just wanna say that it has been really helpful to listen to that group. They come up with a lot of creative ideas and suggestions. And for me, as a school board member and a parent, it's helped me feel more comfortable with some of the direction that we may be going. I did, I have received some family feedback, and Kelly, maybe you can clarify this a little bit better. The, the survey that went out to parents, I am hearing kind of a resounding message from some of the parents saying. But one of the options wasn't going back to school full-time. And I said, that's kind of what's implied, is that we're gonna try to do that. These are the options if we're unable to because of guidelines. And I, I'm not sure if everybody completely is understanding of that, or how that plays itself out.
Yeah, Carrie, I wa, I was. I'm a little concerned about that too, but it, it, that is the direction is if we can't. I think that we maybe should have made that bold or something. If we can't go back a hundred percent full-time. These would be our other options that we could choose from. Because that is the intent. The intent would be if, you know, the, the school board lets us go back, if you guys say it's okay, if Alex is good with it. Then we would, of course, we would love to go back full-time, everybody, you know, back to the way it was, but. We don't, we don't have that direction yet from the Health Department, so.
Yes, and we need to find out about spacing guidelines and how many children can be in a classroom and, and firm up some of the busing situation and. And that's what's so helpful, having all of these committees working out.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you folks being there. It's been really helpful, and I love the team. They, they are very creative.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, six point oh six is the Subcommittee on Operations, Transportation, and Nutrition with Brenda.
Hello. This one is quite challenging. We spent all day Friday at the ESD doing child nutrition and transportation. So I learned a lot from that, only to come into my meeting yesterday with my Subcommittee to learn some of the things I learned Friday had already changed. So, you know, it's a moving target, but I do have Catherine Ward, Holly Tucker, and Robert Heron as. Part of the group. So we've got all three of the operation pieces covered. And then I have fourteen total, which is a good mix of bus drivers. Community members, parents. I've got principals, assistant principals, the mechanics on there. So we've got people that understand transportation and other food service workers that understand the child nutrition. So what we're doing is working on three models, kind of going behind Kelly's committee. And doing some very generic type things that we know we can tweak as things change. So we're breaking up into subcommittees this week. Catherine and myself and Maureen are taking on food services. We'll be meeting on Thursday to try and do some specific outlines for those models. Holly is meeting with her bus drivers that are on the committee this week also, and they're going to take. The transportation, which is a little more complicated, because you have to route all the students that are riding your bus. And that's what the ESD committee has told us on Friday, that that's going to be the hardest part of transportation, knowing who is riding your buses. So we have also talked about even having people register possibly. If they know they're going to want to ride the bus, that maybe we do an online registration of some sort, so we can get an idea of where those kids live. So that's some options there. Catherine shared with us on food service that she learned Monday that they are not allowed to wear a cloth mask. They have to have disposable masks. So that had changed from Friday, from what we were hearing from the Health Department. So those are the types of things we're looking at. And good, Robert, with his maintenance and custodial, has promised us. He'll just come right along with us and adapt with whatever we need. So that's where our committee is right now. We will meet again on Monday. And our little subcommittees will bring back our recommendations to discuss with the whole group to see. How everybody feels about, and if anything is changed. how everybody feels about it and if anything has changed by next Monday again, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Anybody else? Dr. Apostle?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda, for the updates there. Uh, let's see, six point oh seven is a report from the Subcommittee on Policy Review and Reform to Accommodate a Transitional Model of Education.
Yes. Actually, there is no report other than, uh, we will review current policy in relation to the reopening of schools plan. And we will begin by reviewing policy that re, that deals specifically with the subcommittee, uh, work. That's where we have, where we must start. So I, I have not quite honestly had the time to bring the committee together, uh, but I will. But I'm not in a hurry to do it until I know what the plan is going to be. There's no use bringing people to talk about policy when we don't have the plan in place yet. So, um, our first meeting that we will have though will be focused on the seven cut, uh, subcommittee work, pieces of work and to see what policies we have in place now that would support any direction that we might go. And if we don't have policy that correlates highly with the potential opening of schools plan, then we have our work cut out for us and we have to work with the attorney. So trying to create time to work with the attorney as we develop policies for the reopening of schools is going to be challenging, especially in the month of July and August.
Yeah, absolutely. Alrighty. Moving on to item six point oh eight, Report from the Subcommittee on Safety and Security Issues with Karen DeWitt and Robert Heron.
Good evening, everyone. So we've been meeting, um, recently and we've been going over the revised timelines to make sure that we're going to be in the milestones or we're going to make sure we meet our July fifteenth deadline. Uh, we also, in our last meeting, went over all the OSPI guidelines from, that were issued the earlier in the week and we went through actually all the entire health and safety section, just looking at, uh, all of the different scenarios and the things that, that were impacting the work of the group. And that was really eye opening for everyone because, you know, we were already just starting to discover some things were, as part of the report, that were contradictions or things that were not clear. And they use very firm language like, um, you know, things that you, that were expected to do, but then also say in other places that, well, as, as good as you can, but then also turn around and use language again that you must. And so we're working through all those different types of situations. You know, there's also a lot of, you started working through the logistics of the different scenarios, you know, and where Kelly was talking about all the different, different scenarios which school could open next year. When we actually start talking about how we're going to keep, people together and keep people separated and keep people, uh, and getting people into the buildings and, and the logistics of everything. It, it just, uh, becomes very daunting not knowing where we're going. So we just broke it up into three different scenarios and actually there make recommendations for each way we end up, end up going. And then, uh, as well as, you know, started, we started to discuss some of these things. For instance, now it's becoming more and more clear that transportation will not be, uh, taking, doing temperature checks, uh, at, at the bus stops or anything of that nature. Uh, the, the guidelines for SPI is that they expect us to take them at the schools. Well, what would that look like? Would we, we bring kids through like, looking like, um, you know, polio vaccine lines from the nineteen fifties? And everyone corrals together and we're taking temperatures one by one and logging everybody through and hundreds and hundreds of kids at once. And then, and then what do you do with the kid that the temperature comes above a hundred point four? You know, it's, it's ghastly to think you start pulling kids out of line that failed a temperature check in front of all their friends and peers and everybody else is going and, and isolate them. What career stigma would that be? That, that, that doesn't sound like, uh, you know, I mean, it was a, a school environment that's supposed to be warm and welcoming and, 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 and where people feel emotionally safe. That mean, so there's a lot of things that we got to work through on how that could be done. And, and then we heard further on Friday from Doc Stein with the Mason County Health Department that he didn't think temperature checks, uh, were critical and that just we're learning more of, or about transmission and spread. The temperature checks are just not really effective. And so we're hoping that, that maybe there's a way that we can implement this without temperature checks based on that type of information. So we're working through, chasing those, those types of things down as well. And then, um, so it's just, it's, we're, we, we're going to have to increase our meetings to twice weekly. Next, this coming Thursday, we start our actual decision making for some of our recommendations. We'll have screen polling. It'll be organized so people can go through and we'll have a, a discussion about the different options that in the, and, and take additional comments from committee members. We'll put it up on a poll and, uh, see where the group's going and then try to make some final recommendations. We're going to break those, that, the, the entire section for, uh, health and safety into three sections, three separate meetings where we can go through each one of them. A third and a third and a third, and then clean it all up and then be able to meet our June, uh, eighth deadline for, or July eighth deadline for Alex. So it's exciting, but it is, um, you know, there's just so much as we start to get into discussions where there's so much gray area between the committees. And I would bring our group back around and say, nope, that one's for transportation and operations. And nope, that's for Kelly and teaching and learning. We'll get some more feedback from them and directions as they go. Um, and, uh, and so we can be ready to help them, um, as we move on.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I think there's some overlap as well. There will be in all of these things. One thing about, um, safety and security is, um, like wearing masks and, um, that brings up some other issues that we talked about. It was to, um, if it's required that teachers wear masks, um, it sounds like the schools are required to provide those.
That's right. And we're, we're.
Required to provide those for the teachers and the staff, all the staff, then what about our kids?
Well, SPI actually addresses that.
Of what kinds of masks and whatever, how do we work around those things?
Yeah, the SPI guidelines, they actually say that we have to supply them to the student. So we're actually already in the, the district's already stockpiling those for, so we'll be ready for school. And then of course, the governor has more guidance today on masks and actually requiring, for private citizens to wear masks with, um, under penalty of, I just had read a report, meaning that there would actually be a misdemeanor, um, if private citizens were not wearing masks in public. And that's a new, news of today. And so that also has implications within the district too.
Other questions or comments for that committee? Yes?
Yes. Uh, Robert, can you talk a little bit about, uh, what we discussed in terms of measuring classrooms? And in terms of, uh, adapting to the social distancing issue of six feet?
Well, that's, that's a good point of one of the gray areas between committees, because that's something that Kelly's team is working on specifically. It is a discussion of topic also with our committee. Um, and, uh, and I even received, uh, when MOA members of, are, I've been sharing information back and forth between each other as well. And I received some drawings today of some, uh, something that North Kitz app is trying to do with their, with their students. But basically, under most of our scenarios, we could not seat uh, all of our students in our classrooms, uh, and maintain complete social distancing. You would, there would either have to be reduction or some of our smaller class sizes, of course, would fit. But when we started dealing with, especially when we started getting about twenty students, um, in a classroom, it gets very difficult to do the full separation. And then, uh, then we get in a situation where OSPI does, is, is saying like they do with the buses, then do the best you can. But, uh, that is something that the Mason County Health Department's been clear on, that social distancing is the most. And, uh, um, and face masks are the most important things for, uh, spread of COVID. And so those will be part of our recommendations is we'll explore all those different options.
What was really clear, uh, in our workshop last week and reiterated, uh, again and again and again, is that we needed to provide masks for all students and staff and that the six foot social distancing was absolutely mandatory. And based on the, on that fact, and then the transportation is something that we have more leeway than we initially had. And that, that's a complex issue in itself. But, um, are we using, in your discussions and in Kelly's, are we talking about utilizing the gymnasium? And, and, uh, in, in the classroom distribution issue?
We, we've talked about it briefly, but it doesn't seem like a, a likely scenario. Number one is that most of the conversations that we have regarding food service includes using an expanded gym, as it is, because our current food service, the areas that we use would be insufficient. Spreading people out, even increasing the number of our, uh, lunch settings, uh, per day. So, uh, we're going to have to spread out like Bordeaux to include the new gym and the existing multipurpose room at Evergreen instead of just using half the gym like they've had to use, they will have to use the full gym. The same with Mountain View. Uh, OMS would have to use the commons and probably expand into, uh, additional spaces as well. And so therefore that would make it very difficult to also do classrooms with those spaces. Then number two, um, we still have some sort of PE requirements. We're not sure to what extent they'll be waived. And then number three, um, in our initial study, when we looked at the number of students that we would get into a space like that, if we used it exclusively for, um, for, uh, for seating for students, we could only seat maybe a quarter of our students, uh, in the, those areas spread out. And then, and then, and then even beyond that, I have been in other states involved with, um, you know, after hurricanes, tornadoes and things of that nature, having to use gymnasium spaces and so forth. For question, the quality of that as an education space being shared is very poor. Uh, and the quality, you know, of, 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 of education is, is compromised. So I, it doesn't seem to be a feasible, um, means in which to conduct versus other options like, uh, you know, that we're considering like continuing home instruction or mixed models or so forth. It, it, it doesn't seem to be an option.
You know. Ask Robert to have his folks go out and measure, um, some nor, uh, regular sized classrooms, you know, average classrooms in each building. And amazingly, they're all within a foot or two of each other. But, um, you, you really can't, when you draw that six, as uh, Superintendent Reichdahl did, and you draw those, those circles around the six feet to get the kids in, we're going to have to think about all kinds of things along that line, um, removing extra furniture, whatever we can do to actually get half the kids in the classroom at that. So, and then as far as PE requirements, thanks for bringing that up, Robert. Right now, um, Lorna let us know that it's five students per teacher. So I'm not really sure what we're going to do with that situation, but yeah, that's.
Per teacher?
Yeah, five students per teacher.
In?
PE.
Okay. Those are things that the committees really need to take a look at, school by school in terms of space that meets the directive of social distancing. And in my opinion, this is just my opinion, we're going to have to use, regardless of the educational environment in a, in a gymnasium, we're going to have to partition off areas in the gymnasium to comply with the six foot social distancing, which they have been emphatic about. The other, uh, issue that comes into play there, uh, how are you going to staff those additional areas? That may require additional teachers. But there's no way that we're going to meet the social distancing directive that was very clear last week. If we don't use, uh, facilities that we've never used before for classroom space. So, uh, what I'm going to be looking for from your committees and what the board would want, I'm sure, is what's the plan at each one of our schools to accommodate the social distancing issue? And it would have to, you know, you may have to go to places that we've never been before, but that's one that's absolutely critical. That along with making sure staff and students have masks. That they're not going to deviate from that. They won't do it, at least at this time.
Yeah, the committee will go through and look at the information and if the amount of square footage exceeds the, and it is possible, then it'll tell you what, what that information is and, um, and, uh, how many students we can fit in there and show you how many are short. And that it would recommend a different model than housing them in the gym. There's just, you know, it's, there's only so much space available.
Right.
We'll, we'll, but we'll demonstrate it.
Very good.
That's why we, that's why we've asked for those from Robert and his staff has been so nice. But that is the reason that it's facilitating either a rotating schedule or phasing in some, every school is facing this and looking at every single inch of space.
Absolutely. Depending on, on the instructional, uh, design.
Yes, yes.
Alex, I'd like to tag on. We also, Robert was kind enough today. It's going to be a mesh of the three committees, I think, because his people went out today and set up tables for food service to do the social distancing and only put two at a table and to see how many we could get in the cafeterias and the gymnasium. So we're all going to have to work together on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Robert. I know it's a challenge out there, no doubt.
And I'm just thinking about the future impact this has on construction of new schools. And whatever the new math is going to be, you know, they had allowed X number of square feet per student, so to speak. And, um, what they're going to do with that. So that'll be interesting. Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, moving on to the next report. This will be from the Subcommittee on Sports and Co-Curricular PK through twelve program with Trevor and Mark Smith.
Hey, everybody. How you doing? Yeah, we, uh, took our, uh, committee and we, we broke it into two parts. We have our athletic side and then we have our activity side. Our athletic side, um, we still are, um, waiting for our July seventh, where the WIAA, puts out their, um, recommendations to OSPI and then hopefully that will get approved. They did, we, we worked really hard in our committee to get our guidelines all put together. Um, we had a quite extensive, um, guidelines for, not only for summer sessions, for weight room sessions, for specific sports and everything else. And as soon as we got that document put together, WIAA yesterday came out with their guidelines, which were, um, very interesting. Our guidelines are actually a little more strict than theirs are. So, um, ours are in place. Um, we did meet with activities, uh, yesterday, the first time as their subcommittee. They had other, you know, a lot of other questions that, uh, they wanted to bring up. And, um, a lot of it was stuff with like transportation, the other stuff we've been talking about here tonight. You know, if we have a split schedule, how would that look for practices? Because if you have half the kids here one day and the other half here the next day, um, how are they going to get to their sports practices every night? And, um, you know, how would that work with transportation and all these other questions? They also asked, um, you know, they had some concerns with band and choir. They have heard that some schools, and I don't know, this is just coming from them, some of the people that were on the committee, that some schools have already canceled their choir and band classes for next year. And that was a, you know, a big, huge concern for them. Uh, so we have a lot of other concerns for our, our, our activities, more so than our athletics right now. So, um, it'll just be interesting to see moving forward, what guidelines come out as far as our co-curricular activities and everything else. So we're waiting for that July seventh date to see if OSPI, um, accepts the WIAA guidelines and hopefully we have something to work with.
June twenty-third and we're still getting, uh, different pieces of information. That's, uh, going to be challenging for sure. But, uh, cancel, I, canceling music and, and PE classes, um, I don't know who that district might be, but, uh, I don't know if they're premature on that or not, but, um, canceling those two classes has tremendous impact, not only on students, but on staffing also.
I'm, I'm, we're sure we can find a safe way to work around whatever guidelines they have. And I'm sure there will be. Um I'm her, I'm, we're sure we can find a safe way to work around whatever guidelines they have, and I'm sure there will be guidelines for those activities, so.
Sure. Thank you, Trevor.
We, I'm so sorry, we have state guidelines for PE. It's not like we can just overlook them unless they're going to give us direction from above.
The Health Department could.
Yes, they could.
And O and OSBI.
Right, but I mean, we just can't go in and make that decision now without their guidance.
We can't make that decision, but uh it may be something that uh we keep in the back of our minds as we move forward. Because if the virus continues to escalate like it is as of today, um that may be something that would be taken into consideration for sure.
Uh Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh you know, I think it's just important that this time, this day age, we keep an outside the box mindset. You know, growth mindset versus a fixed mindset. We're all in this together and we're gonna try to keep our health and safety of the individuals.
Right. Number one, for sure.
And I got, oh, I got a little red today at the graduation ceremony.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, we'll move on to the last Subcommittee, and this one will be on Communications and Public Relations with Katie Diamond.
Good evening, so our committee has met a few times. We just met today. Um our committee consists of teachers, staff members, community leaders, business leaders. Um it's been super helpful having those outside perspectives um from people other than the school district. Um we sent out a survey a few weeks ago and those were completed by June nineteenth. So today, our meeting was focused on going over those results. Um a few of the things that stood out in those results was that our English and non-English speaking families prefer different ways of communication and receive their communications differently. Um so we brainstormed ideas on how we can reach each of our po- all of our populations, and so they're receiving everything that they need to know. Um what else to talk about? Uh we talked about keeping messages short and to the point. With some families having children in multiple schools, they get an overload of communication. And that was a few of the comments were families saying that they're getting over communicated with because they have multiple children in each schools. They're getting school communications and then district communications. Um so we talked about refining those just so people didn't feel so overwhelmed. Um another topic we talked about was goo- using Google Classroom to reach more of our students and families, and especially during this time since families are home. And if more students and families are home next year, it's another great avenue to use, which we haven't used before for like district messages. Um Ricardo and his new bus, Row has been an awesome resource for us. It's already been used multiple times just to reach our families. He was helping get surveys out to families, which was great. And it's been super, our family's been very excited to see the bus, like you said, and it was well received. And it's just one more way to reach families that may not have internet or don't have resources to get the information. Um we are planning on having a webpage similar to what we set up this year for next year, where everything, all the information that will be going out regarding the reopening of schools will be located in one spot on the district website. Just to have a focal pinpoint where all of the communication is that people can come back and revisit. And we will continue to use these survey results as we move forward. It's gonna be super important as our committees and all their hard work come together and we get all that information and how we share those families. And that is it for me.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Alrighty, anything, Dr. Apostle?
Yes, uh you've been hearing probably uh two dates, July fifteenth and July eighth. July fifteenth is when we will have our plan uh ready to review with the board and the community. Ju- July eighth is a meeting that I called just recently, and that's a very important check-in where we are going to see how the various Subcommittee work integrates together in preparation for completing our plan by July fifteenth. So um the only thing I'll say to the Subcommittees is that, uh and I've said this before, we need to put it into high gear and probably me be meeting more so than we have at this point in order to be ready by July eighth and July fifteenth. Uh the more we discuss the various issues pertaining to each Subcommittee's work, the more questions arise and uh time is moving forward. So I highly recommend that you increase the number of meetings uh with your groups uh so that we can meet those important deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um thank you to all of the uh different Subcommittees. I know there's a lot of work going on and appreciate uh the updates. I know we did it at the last board meeting too, but there's still a lot of uh things that change. You all know that, I don't have to tell you that. Alrighty, next up is our annual report on the ALE programs with Stacy Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Uh thank you for allowing me to present on this topic. It is a requirement of our school board and of the state that we report yearly on our ALE programs, which stands for Alternative Learning Experience, and it's a different way of funding student enrollment. And it also allows us to give great flexibility to students who need to come to school uh part-time due to uh a multitude of reasons. It could be for um parenting, they could be have health issues, they might be working, or they might just prefer this method of learning. And before the pandemic, this was a very small group of students who were learning for much of their time at home. And now, of course, we're switching to more of that in the whole district. So I'm not going to spend too much time reading the report to you. I will just highlight a few key things. You can see that when our enrollment, um when we closed in March, uh we had our enrollment was headcount thirty-one students in the Contract-Based Education Program and thirty-two in the Independent Learning Academy. And you can see the equivalent FTE to the right. We try to keep it at thirty FTE, so we were a little lower than we wanted to be right at that point. Our headcount does go up for these programs, and you can see at the end of the year, although we did not calculate FTE. Um we had forty students enrolled in Contract-Based Education when we ended the school year and thirty-three in ILA. And part of the reason for that big increase in CBE is that Carrie Fennell focuses on seniors, and we had some seniors that we really thought we could get across the finish line to graduate. We had a few seniors return to us um once the pandemic had even started, which was amazing. So we actually are graduating seventy-nine seniors this year, which we know that the rules are different a little bit this year for seniors. Um but we're really excited about that, and we just released today our senior awards video. If you all uh will get a chance to look at that at some point, hopefully. And as you know, we're doing our graduation in September, so it could be a longer graduation than normal with that many students. Um the Contract-Based Education and Independent Learning Academy have been our two ALE programs in the past, and we have it set up that we have it one teacher per thirty students is the ratio we found works really well. Um students, when they start in the program, they each develop a written student learning plan. They meet with their parent or guardian, they sit down with the teacher, and they have a one-on-one meeting with the teacher for about half an hour to an hour, going through all their graduation requirements, uh looking at what they want to do for classes and coursework. And in the past, this has been relatively independent coursework. It was fuel-led or packet work. Um some classes were taught through direct instruction, especially for students who needed reading assistance and things like that. But it was a lot, it was mostly that they came to school ten hours a week and then the rest of their work was done at home. That's gonna be changing some for next year, and I'll I'll explain that towards the end. Um students have to sign a statement of understanding, which actually that has been eliminated from ALE law, so I'll have to take that out for next year. Um and they have to really understand that, you know, how they're, what they're doing in this program, the expectations are a little different. Unfortunately, we do find that students that learn online historically have earned less credit than students in our other programs per month. Students often come in thinking, I can do this, I'm gonna learn online. And as we've seen through the pandemic, there's a lot of challenges for that. But the students that find it fits, they do great in it. Uh so each month, the students have to continue to make adequate progress on their courses. Oftentimes, they're only taking two or three courses at a time, depending on their goals and how they learn best. Occasionally, a student wants to take five or six and have a full load, but a lot of times they want to finish up a course, courses per month and then switch to new courses. We use fuel-led, like I said, we also have been transitioning transitioning to some Google Classroom courses from these teachers, especially with the pandemic. When they come in, they sign in for the time that they're there and this, the teacher uh documents that they've been there ten hours a week, that's our requirement as the district. It's not, and as a school, it's not a requirement from the state, they have to be there that much. We've upped that from our earlier requirements of five hours a week because we found students just didn't have enough contact time, and the more they're in the building, the more they actually do well on that program. At the end of the month, they have a check-in with their teacher and their parent or guardian to make sure that they are doing well. If they are not doing as well as they need to be, they are, we are required to put them on an intervention plan within five days of that check-in. And that could be anything from increasing their hours to providing them with a tutor, maybe they need drug and alcohol support, whatever it is, we try to put that into the intervention plan. If they are in academic probation for three months, we then start looking at, is there another program that would fit them better? One of the good things is we used to be mandated to do that, but state law has adapted, knowing that students that are in alternative learning programs are often challenged for a variety of reasons. It could be a health issue, it could be anxiety, and we don't want to just dump them to another program if this really is the best fit. We want to continue to give more interventions if possible. So we do evaluate our program and we look at how it supports the overall district goals. So our target is a hundred percent graduation rate in our district. And I really firmly believe these programs give opportunities to students who may have dropped out for some reason in the past. We have a great partnership with Shelton High School on this. The counselors send us kids that just really are ready to drop out perhaps for a multitude of reasons, or they've already dropped out. For example, I know Suzie's on this call, we worked for about seven months on a young man who kept wanting to enroll, didn't enroll, finally got with us, he was working full-time and he graduated in January, you know, mid-year and got it done, and he was twenty-one. So we really try to retrieve all these kids that might be looking at leaving the school district. So the graduation rate that we had from last year was thirty-nine percent for our four-year cohort at choice overall, which is still fairly low. We know some of the reasons for that, but it is an eight-point-three percentage point increase from the year before. And like I said, this year, we have seventy-nine students who've completed all of their credits for graduation. Those are higher due to COVID nineteen than usual. And sixty-three percent of those students finished in an ALE program. A lot of our students do start in the day program or one of our other programs, but especially when they're older and they're working, that's a great fit for them to do that part-time. We also do, we don't have um results from this year as far as our interim assessments because of COVID nineteen or our summative smarter balanced assessments for this year. But our students in these programs did receive reading intervention if they needed it. Uh they received direct math instruction based on their needs, whether it was through Alex, the Alex program or small class sizes with their teachers. And then just in the final portion of this, all of our ALE programs are also evaluated as part of our school improvement process. So you see all that in in the SIT plan we send to you every year. And just a quick note, um like I said, I'm trying to keep this brief, but next year, you've heard a lot about the reformation of choice and the opening of Cedar High School. So next year, all of choice will be funded under ALE. Uh we're expecting to have about a hundred and fifty students, they will be required to be there ten hours a week, but we are really moving towards uh having more students in the ALE programs than we've had in the past for a number of different reasons, and some of them are going to be required to be there full days, even though they are ALE funded, because we just know it's best for them as ninth or tenth graders. So we're switching the model up a little bit, the minimum will be ten hours for all students, um but some students will be there more. And in our planning for COVID nineteen, we have a great team planning this whole thing out, so we've got some systems in place to address how we'll keep kids there separated if needed with less time in classroom. Then maybe we had originally planned just to keep the numbers down. So I think these programs are pretty amazing, we have a great team working on them, and we decided earlier this year really to move all of choice towards ALE funding, and then we'll have Cedar High School operating separately. So that's my quick ALE rundown, any questions?
Questions or comments from anybody? Alrighty. Appreciate that. And um then you get to continue again, Stacy, with your status on the new school. You mentioned.
So we are super excited about Cedar High School, and basically what we've done is most of our staff has, we've split our staff up into the two schools. So we have two um schools running in the building, which has been an interesting change for us. We realized a little earlier this month that we need to have two ASPs, for example, and two school improvement processes. So that's one of those things we hadn't necessarily predicted all of that as we were opening up a second school on campus. So I really appreciate you letting me speak about Cedar, we're super excited about this this school for next year. Right now, we're enrolling students, we've been reviewing applications as they've come in. It's been a little more difficult to promote it than we had hoped because the week we closed was the week I was supposed to be attending all of the Shelton High School advisories to talk about Cedar High School, but we've had staff up at Shelton High, they've been a great partner again, and at OBJ handing out brochures to students. Um we're working on marketing and we've done a lot of marketing, we were on the radio with iFiber, but we're going to do more. I have a promotional video almost finished, and really in August, I'm gonna hit it super hard with trying to recruit more students for Cedar, because it's pretty hard in the middle of a pandemic to encourage parents and students to join a new school, but I think we have some great things to offer. So we've already got a number of applications in. Um last week, I think it was, or the week before, Amber and I met with Cabinet to discuss some of these items that came up and to make sure we're all on the same page. That was great support from all of the Cabinet and Dr. Apostle, we really appreciate that. And just recently finalized our daily schedule. Um so most of the teachers are teamed up to do interdisciplinary teaching for two periods. They'll be doing a hundred and thirty minutes where student students earn credit for two subjects such as biology and health, ecology and PE, or photography and English language arts are teamed up together. So the schedule will involve a morning advisory, a standalone period where they might have reading instruction. We put our math into standalone because we know that that's something that really has key standards they have to hit. But then the rest of their instruction will be in interdisciplinary project-based learning. We're going to the ECHO grading system, so with Bob's discussion about grading earlier, we're really excited about that because it grades on five key components, including collaboration, written communication, oral communication, agency, and your knowledge and thinking, of course. Um this week, we have some extra money from our uh grant from the state based on our OSSI grant. So teachers will have some time to plan together this week. They'll be getting together with their partners and planning out their projects to get those standards set up for the fall. And they did a virtual training with our new tech partner in May, and then we will be having a virtual um and/or in-person training in July, depending on how we set it up with all the rules around COVID, and we've been working with the district on that um for teachers to be trained even further and how to really set up these projects for the fall. That's the second week in July. Right now, we also have weekly weekly meetings with all of the Cedar staff, along with Subcommittee meetings on everything from, you know, creating our staff and student community agreements, designing our school culture. We have a three-year strategic strategic plan we're finishing up, student handbook, all of those things that go along with a new school, school colors, all of those types of things. So our staff is working very hard on this project and I'm really proud of them. Um we're also planning for how to adapt for the pandemic, of course, and if we go with the the model that Kelly mentioned, uh which was the most voted upon in our committee, where they're on two days uh come, you know, Wednesday is an uh distance learning day, and then the other group comes on Thursday and Friday. We've already come up with lots of ideas about how we will do project-based learning virtually with kids zooming in, and also the ones that'll be in the building can do a lot of it there on campus. And then we're still working on some facility changes for this year. We've had great support from the district on this and from Robert's crew, so there's gonna be some repainting of the downstairs uh classrooms just to make it look a little more like a new school for the students. Um the technology has been installed, which actually, Brenda, we got to work on one of those computers today when I was in the building with that new projector. It was just amazing, the clarity on that, so I think we're really right on track. And then with Dr. Apostle's support, we're still looking at where we might be located for next year. So that is the super fast rundown on Cedar High School. I will just say, the team is just really excited. Amber Hosford and I have a leadership two-hour Zoom tomorrow with our new tech leadership coach. We each have a coach that, we have a coach that's gonna be working with us through the whole next year to get this school off the ground. So any questions on Cedar High School?
Questions or comments from anybody? Alrighty, that's a lot of great information, there's a lot of detail in there. It's it's been um very enjoyable to watch the progress of this new school develop and appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment? All right. Thank you much. We'll go on to the MET Academy update now.
All right.
Yeah, I'm gonna start off, Sandy. Thank you, everyone, for having us here this evening. We're gonna set aside all of this difficult planning that we're doing for a moment and really dream about that future again in academy. So this is a very preliminary discussion and conversation about what it might look like to have that manufacturing, engineering, and technology building uh built in what is currently the staff parking lot at Shelton High School. And so I know that Carrie was lucky, got to go with us to Central Kids App to look at their programs up there. And as she has talked to some of you, I am sure, this is that idea of the programs that our community partners are looking for in the areas of pneumatics and hydraulics and electrical and those supporting skills that whether or not you're going straight to the workforce, going to a technical degree or going to a four-year engineering degree, these are those foundational skills that you need. Um as well as looking forward to our other partners at the airport of, do we want an aviation pathway? So again, this is a very preliminary. again, this is a very preliminary, but big dream discussion about the academy work that you've wanted us to do. And so I'm going to turn it over to Robert and David and they're going to talk a little bit about the building itself. And then I know Brenda and Alex are here to talk about the funding. If you have questions about that, and I'm happy to talk about programming and Dawn is here with me as well to talk about that. So with that, Robert and David, take it away.
Well, everyone, I'm excited as much as Dina. She's inspiring and, and whenever she talks, everybody listens and we're, so we're rallying the troops and getting things moving forward with the vision that's being set forth. I'd like to introduce to you David Brown. David Brown will act as project manager on on this project and in the same way that KMB did for us on the Bond projects. Also David worked and you've probably seen his name many, many times and reports and so were David Brown worked as a third party to KMB and provided the project management services for the high school. In this function, he would be working independently directly with the school district. And so with that, David Brown.
Thank you, Robert. So we've been talking about this project for, well, since about the first of the year. And then as everybody knows, we, we got the same interruption that everybody else did on every program and and through that we've faced the same kind of challenges and changes and, and modifications to our initial thinking that everybody else is dealing with. So we started out with a plan that even today is still kind of morphing and we're still trying to get it into exactly what we want it to look like to go forward with the construction. What I'd like to do first is give you a snapshot of what we had initially been talking about and the concepts of what the building is going to look like. And kind of the square footages that we'd been talking about. And Robert had mentioned that we, we kind of had a little bit of a model that we'd worked from. And I've got with me here, I've got Brent Compton and Galen Newton from NAC Architecture, who are the leaders of our design team and they've got a couple of little diagrams are going to show that show what our thinking was a while back and we'll have them kind of describe what what the thinking was then and kind of what the layout of this thing is going to look at, look like and the expandability aspects of it. And then once they're done, I'll come back and talk a little bit about the, the budget we're going to look at going forward. So Brent, it is all yours.
Alright, so can everybody see my screen? Alright. So this is a site plan, north is up. And you can see the A building that's just been finished and now we are talking about in the existing staff parking lot. So kind of at the top of the screen there. We had envisioned that at the time we were talking about a core program, Core Plus program here. Let me let me do some annotation while I'm talking. So so this would be the core program here. And then we were talking about having an aviation classroom and then supported with restrooms and mechanical in space in there. And the idea was when we placed it in the site that we would have shops and stuff to the right-hand side here that would, that would expand towards the east. And on the left, we have the aviation and other classrooms, maybe computer-generated classes or those things that are more standard could expand to the west this way. And so we also, a part of this project was we're looking at developing outdoor shared spaces that these rooms, these shop stuff could have doors that open out and have some cover and extend some work out there. But also maybe these doors can have some visibility in them. So people can see what's going on and, and be excited about the, all the the cool tools and toys they have there to play with. And also part of this site plan, we were going to have to redevelop a new staff parking lot because we're taking a big chunk of it and, and eventually taking a lot more with the, any future expansions. Additionally, we also know that there's more staff here now based upon going to four grades. And so we also need to accommodate additional staff. So our budget also included and our studies also included developing this area back here as a parking lot and it would be okay with the port and the airport because that's not a a building for people to be in. So that would, that would be acceptable to them.
Let me mention two other things Brent. So in addition to the new staff parking lot that you see on the, in the left side of the photo there, up at the top center of the photo, that's what will be left of the existing staff parking lot. That also needs a resurfacing. We gave it a, a kind of a facelift when we were doing the building A work, but it also needs to be revamped a bit. And down just off the bottom of the page is building 800. And several things would, would eventually also be happening in there, which is where some of the the industrial type wood shop works and welding things are happening now. And they, some of that programming will change and as the the various programs get more well-defined in the new structure, the new building, different things will also happen in the A, in the 800 building and those two things will kind of work together as we work through the phases of the project.
Great. You ready for the elevations? In the 3D model?
Big unveiling.
That's right.
I'm trying to get it here. I got the, we have the floor plan, which is just again, just again, the core program with some, some roll-up doors that would open out. Have access not only from the outside, but like in your hallway. And this again, these toys would initially, you know, support any additions we go out on either way.
Yeah. And, and before you leave this folks, take kind of a, a, a good look at this because this, this could become a phasing situation as well between what you see in the orange, there is a big primary space. The Core Plus part, part of the program, which Don can describe a lot better than either Brent or I probably could. And the blue space, which right now is showing is aviation. And then the, the gray is support facilities and the light tan color, those are, are basically common areas. Hallways and, and building, general building space between. So that's what we're kind of, what I'm going to talk about in a minute when it comes down to some phasing issues. So Brent, go ahead with your elevations.
Okay, so this is a quick snapshot from the, from the model. Again, a simple metal structure with a single shed roof. This is looking like a bird looking down on the site from the north. And the white boxes you see on either side of the, the box with the colored roof, those are the future expansions so that going to the east will have more shops and that would probably be more roll-up doors along the way and then towards the, the east, towards the west, excuse me, would be again, maybe a robotics lab or maybe, you know, a future CAD drafting lab or something, some kind of so we will hurt to find yet. But it all be related around the technology, engineering and, and manufacturing sort of overall encapsulating idea of the project. And with that, we envision the building to be a fairly simple structure with a metal siding. And again, you can see the hold on here. You can see the, the large roll-up doors that have, will be glazed. So we, and we also have light introduced high into these spaces. Again, daylight seems like a really important thing. And the, the one we saw at Central Kids App, the non-light that was coming in seemed really nice. And it was a very simple facility, it's simple structure itself. We kind of want to replicate that and make this as an economical building at all. It would want that, that I guess industrial sort of manufacturer look to the building at all to sort of reinforce the purpose of what's going on in these buildings.
While still tying it to the overall look of the campus and
Yes, yes, it'll, it'll be similar in archetype with what we've got with the other additions and similar materials.
And I assume that Alcoa is in high climber red?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks Brent. So that kind of defines the, the basic character of what the, the the building, the structure is going to look like and a, a little bit of what the program is intended to do. The real question comes how do we, or what is the budget for this thing? What, what do we spend to build this? And that's a, that again, in, in these times is a, is the big question. Brenda, well, I think is going to talk some more about this and I think Don has some, some special ideas that he's looking at as well. But the cost of construction is what it is and when we, when we, when we get to the point of, of having a firmly established budget, then we'll be able to get a better definition of what we really want to put into the phases of the building. And in this first phase, we think we're going to have somewhere in the three and a half million to maybe $5 million neighborhood to spend. And that's total project cost of that probably somewhere in the neighborhood of two to $4 million is construction with the rest being the, the costs associated around that soft costs, including some contingency to, to make sure we have enough to cover the, the unforeseen. Of course, we have income or sales tax here in Washington State. That's a fairly hefty number. We're planning in some escalation. If we just do a single phase, it's a, it's a one year out. So that's probably about a 4% increase. And if we do a two-phase, it could be two years out. So we put in a little, put in a little bit more to, to cover that as well. And then of course, we've got all the, the costs that go in on, on design and, and everything else. So basically when you, when, when you start with a construction cost, you can figure that another 50% on top of the, the amount that you're figuring as your, your, your construction cost is going to add on top of that a soft cost. That's why these, these projects go up and they cost what they do. The other thing that adds into that, of course, is what goes into the building, the guts of the building. And I think and what we're talking about here, it's a fairly significant item when you're talking about industrial mechanical type equipment, dealing with aviation and, and heavy manufacturing type training. And so that's kind of, that's kind of my portion of it is the construction. And I think Don has more information on the, on the equipment part of it. Don, I think.
Sure. Um, we've been doing a lot of research on the, and it's really going to depend on what programs we select to put in there. We're still in that process. We definitely looked at the Core Plus programs, which originally Core Plus started out with Boeing. It was a Boeing Core Plus program and it was, it was Boeing supplementing schools with this program to get students interested in manufacturing. So they could go to work at Boeing. They're still heavily involved in it, but Core Plus has also moved into construction. They're moving into maritime and it looks now from what I hear, they're going to be moving into the healthcare field also. So and they provide the curriculum for it. I did some quick looks yesterday with one of our suppliers of equipment and equipment wise. They outfitted Central Kids App for about 215,000 in their building. He gave me a figure yesterday with CNC machines and things of that nature around 300,000. But of course, with everything happening, costs continually rise. So as we move it out, you know, a year or two years, we're looking at a greater cost than that. The equipment that we put in there will be 21st century equipment. And as Alex puts it, for the trades, we call it the mat. But it's looking at the trades, we'll look at robotics, pneumatics, mechatronics, hydraulics, electrical, drones, cybersecurity, rigging. So there's a lot of opportunity for this. There's a lot of work in these fields right now and they're very good paying jobs. And as Dina said, these kids can either go right out of high school with some certifications and go right into the workforce, or they can go to a technical school, or they can move on to a university and increase their knowledge in that fashion.
And I want to say that when we're talking about like deciding on programs, it's not that we're uncertain what our students need or that we're waffling on programs. But there are a lot of moving parts in our back-to-school planning. And so even another year out to put this building together, we need to have a really firm footing in what does school look like? And what programs can we be certain that we can offer that best fit our educational model and our student needs? So it's, it's not about being uncertain, other than we need to get one school year started so that we're really, really certain on what pieces go in that building that make the best opportunities for our students.
And we also want to look at what, what the community needs as far as a workforce also. And when companies come in here and they look at workforce, we want to be able to provide students that are going to be good workers for them.
So Alex and Brenda, would you talk a little bit now like where this money comes from? So that the community really clearly understands that, please?
Alex, do you want to go first? And then I can tag on.
You're muted, Alex.
Alex, you're muted.
Yeah, you're muted.
I do not mute it, it just mutes, but this is not a pipe dream. This, this is something that the community is very excited about and rightly so. And this is something that we need to pursue in earnest. And it may not be exactly the way we want it to start out, but we probably need to come up with a scaffolding type of model. So that obviously we don't have to go out to the community and ask for additional money. But if, if we are going to prepare our students for the 21st century, this program and everything that we're talking about this evening, it, it's a must. And so we'll figure out how to make it happen. I don't want to procrastinate. I want us to move forward on this plan because it's essential so our students are employable after high school graduation. So Brenda, you can talk a little bit about the money and please include the project D and the overrun there and how that impacts the money that's coming in from our feeder schools to make this happen.
Right. So we had presented to you before that package D2 was going over budget by about 1.5 million dollars. We do still have contingency that's helping cover that. But in our bond project for Shelton High School, we negotiated with Pioneer, the Canal and Southside for them to contribute to the project. So we will be getting just a little over 6.5 million dollars from those three districts through 2023. We receive money every six months. We got part of the first payment on June 1st and the remainder will come in June 30th. For the first payment, which was about 1.1 million dollars, part of that 600,000 of that, we've got set aside to help offset the overrun of the D2 project. The remainder of it can go towards starting the work on this Met Academy. So this money has to be spent on high school students because it is coming from the non-high districts. That was part of the agreement. So we can use that to fund this project. Actually, we, like I said, there's 6.5 million less 600,000. Plus we'll also have interest earnings on that. fund this project. Actually, um, we, like I said, there's 6.5 million less 600,000 plus we'll also have interest earnings on this. Um, so that will help too. And then David also mentioned he has put contingency in the budget that we've started preparing for this project. So I think we do have a method to make this dream come true. So for our community.
Thank you, Brenda. I really appreciate it. I we are all happy to take questions from the board.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I I'm listening on my phone now because I lost audio.
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can see you.
See you.
On my end, there's a great big echo. I'm wondering how many square feet.
Uh, let me let me try to answer that. That's that's still a moving target. But basically, where we've started talking about phase one, we're we're trying to get in a little over 5,000 square feet into phase one. Where we had initially started in the in the diagrams, you saw that Brent prepared, that included 3,000 square feet or excuse me, 2,400 square feet in the Core Plus program and 1,200 square feet in aviation. And then the support space is making up the rest of that. And those those could change quite a bit. Uh, i- if, for example, if we do this in a a two-phase in if we break that phase into multiple phases, we may do that in two parts and do 3,000 at the start and then add another uh 12,000 the year after that, depending on how the funding stream comes along that Brenda was talking about. But that's the 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 initial target is actually 5240. If you add it all up, that's what we're trying to get to at the start here.
Thank you.
Carrie, do you have questions?
Uh, no question. I'm just really excited about this. I did have the opportunity to go out and see um, the South Kids App building. And to me, it's everything that Don mentioned, where our students can have such a variety and flexibility in pathways and seeing the equipment and the way that they can get certifications that build on other things. It's to me, that's truly exciting uh for our students. And if we have the ability to phase this in, um, I think that that would be uh, just a fantastic thing for our school and for our students to for just their futures. So I no questions for me at this point.
Let me let me add one more thing to on on our visit up to um up to Central Kids App, we took an awful lot of pictures. And I think when we have more time and we can share some of those pictures, it can really give you an idea of the scope of what they accomplished up there and what we're building on. Um, and we'll be we'll be happy to share those pictures when there's when there's a good time to do it and give you kind of a snapshot of where we're headed as well.
Also privileged enough to be able to go on that little field trip and enjoyed it immensely. Um, I'm looking at this from a couple of um security standpoints. You know, what happens? Does this building need a security vestibule or what kind of, you know, lockdown um might? What features might be in the building to facilitate a lockdown on campus? And I was a little concerned about the way it blocks the line of sight into the interior of campus. Wondered maybe if it could use a room to shift it.
Well, one of the thing, one of the things Andy is is um um, you may remember recall is that there was a plan to put portables in the way in that courtyard anyways, and that's still up for discussion. And so that those may block that sightline you're you're thinking about anyways. And then if anything, this building could then make the view of the portables look better because it conceals them. So.
That's true, too. Okay.
But something we definitely should keep in mind as we continue the design.
Okay. And, um, you know, just noticing no no protection from the elements, no overhang, no rain gutters. I don't know, just something that I noticed. I can just see kids walking out the door and getting drenched. You know, around that campus, we have a lot of covered walkways and a lot of overhangs. Um, or maybe, I don't know, I was confused in looking at the diagrams. Is the front door, so to speak, facing the parking lot or facing campus?
That's why we have two doors, one on each side. One to for people to access from the parking lot side, but it was really thought that the door on the south side would be the one that the students would in and go in and out of. The drawings are very preliminary. We haven't done any canopies, thinking we're trying to do as economical as a building as possible. We're also taking little tips from what we saw in Central Kids App where they didn't have any much in the way of cover either. But we will look at that. And as we get further in, as far as security, we do have vestibules in there. So we could lock it off. We're mostly doing that for energy. It consumption, but you know, we could look at that as well. It's harder to blackout a garage door that's all glazed and stuff. So we'd have to figure something out there. I I'm not sure.
And another thing to keep in mind, Sandy, is that one of the functions of the overhead doors is is not just for the purpose of moving equipment or materials in and out. It was also to access the outdoors where a lot of the activities actually took place outdoors. They actually did a lot of the the work itself outdoors, too. So it's it's going to be, we're going to have to wiggle in on this. It's like Brent says, it's so preliminary right now that as we go through design, we'll we'll refine these kinds of things. Those are excellent questions to be asking and.
And what I what I remembered about that other building was that it did seem fairly simplistic on the outside, but that was because of the functionality that it was providing. And they had drones that were going in and out. They had to access the equipment that was hanging on the inside. So I mean, it was all part of the functionality of the building.
Absolutely. It's it's a key element in the programming.
Yeah, Darth Vader had his little robots scurrying around there like crazy.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a comment, Sandy, if I may.
Absolutely.
I I really think in reality, uh, David and and Brett, what we need to do is we we need to reduce the cost and really take into consideration the phasing in issue. I think it's important that we don't let this go to the wayside. I think we need to continue to pursue it realistically. What is it that we can afford to start with and not utilize all of that, maybe five million dollars, but figure out a way to go into phases, but get it started. And then we can develop program. Uh, I think we're going to have to develop program to initiate the the building of this project. But we can also, that also gives us time to get a feel for what's coming down the road in terms of programs that we need may need to implement. But I don't think we should hesitate to get this thing going. I really don't. I think if we do, the money will go somewhere else.
And and just in in quick response to that, Dr. Apostle, I actually have been doing well and and working with Brent. We actually have been doing some analysis of splitting out this early phase work like I like I mentioned in in when when uh Brent had his graphic of of the uh what the building plan looked like. We we actually took a look at what it would do to costs if we took that and did that in two pieces instead of one. So I I we've already been looking at some of that and
Right.
figuring it how we could do that. And there's some, there's some pretty easy ways of doing it pretty efficiently without it becoming a a big extra cost headache. It's it's certainly going to add a little bit of cost to phase it. Certainly, you would expect that, but it's, we can do it without it being a horrendously damaging.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And like you've mentioned, David, uh, we need to dig a little deeper into all of this and but I think we should do it. Uh, we should expedite that process and not let it just go to the wayside. Thank you very much to you and.
We're ready to go.
Yep.
Thank you, Brett.
Any other questions for comments? Alrighty. Thank you, team. That was a great uh and exciting update. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Righty. Now we're moving on to item 6.14. This is a actionable item. Sally Brownfield, do you have audio with us? You do.
I guess so.
Sounds like you have it twice. Okay. I wanted to make sure that you were able to hear because the next item is the proposed list of items to be declared surplus with from Brenda. And I want to make sure that you were able to participate in that. We'll need all three members to take action on that. So go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you. Um, I would like to give kudos to Robert and his staff right off the bat here. This thing has been such a moving target since we started moving surplus into the ASB 300. And then you had schools that wanted to go in and look and remove it. And so the list has changed. I can't even tell you how many times. So they actually went in recently and did a final list for us. And this is it, what you have. It actually changed Friday. Mark Brown updated it for us because somebody else went in and took more stuff. But so we have held out some of our better chairs and desks and have those secured in the building. So if we need future expansion furniture, we do have that. What you're seeing on the list are the items that aren't so great. So um, we're hoping that you will declare all of this surplus and then I will advertise it. And then Robert will hold a surplus sale probably towards late August. And then the schools have already been pulling out more surplus that we're making them hold right now till we can clean out ASB 300 to bring in. So this will be a continuous process, but we would love approval for this tonight so we can get this piece finished. So.
Righty. And members of the board chance to review the list. Do you have any questions or comments?
Questions? I I will make a motion to approve this surplus request list.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the surplus list. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the surplus list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Your list is approved.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate it.
And there's still lots of work to be done now.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Sandy. Well, I'll I'll be as brief as I can be here. We had a an outstanding drive-through graduation at Shelton High School and Carrie and Sally represented the board. Uh, it was a little warm, but I'm telling you, it was very organized. The parents and the students, uh, they were making comments that they were very pleased with the drive-through graduation. But overall, I was I was very impressed and I'll let Carrie and Sally speak about how they felt, but uh, it was well done, uh, very well orchestrated all the way through. I just want to mention that um our subgroups are extremely important in reopening our schools. And that's why I mentioned that maybe we needed to meet more often so that we can meet the deadline of having our plan for reopening schools by July 15th. That July 15th date is very important because once the board hopefully will approve our recommendation, then we need to develop supports for that reopening of school plan. So the July 8th date is very important, uh, where I will meet with the subcommittee leaders to make sure that we're going to be ready by July 15th. Uh, we have an open forum from 6:00 to 7:30. I've increased that by a half hour uh, to allow for questions and discussion. And the two agenda topics will be the budget and again, subcommittee reports. Um, I would like to also very quickly congratulate our principals and our staff uh for doing an outstanding job yeah, for the past three plus months in a very difficult period of time. And also congratulate our principals and staff for putting together virtual uh moving on uh recognition programs. And they're all on our website if you wanted to take a look at them. But I felt that our principals and our entire staff did a great job to wish our students uh the very best in their next journey regarding the school that they will be attending. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. We can now move to the second community comment period. Do we have any community comments?
Yes, we do. We have a comment posted to YouTube from Randy Lewis. Interested in the concept of late work not impacting grades. In the quote, real unquote world, not only quality of work, but timeliness of such work is absolutely a factor in a performance evaluation. Also, we have an email from Charity Dorsey. I'm not liking some of the things I'm hearing about the grading system. I believe school is meant to prepare students for real life. I don't feel all of what I've heard will help these young people prepare for college and for the workforce. Real life has deadlines. Real life has real consequences for dishonesty. Real life expects you to show up on time where you are expected. I think this teaches our kids that there aren't any consequences to actions. Let them learn these important and practical life skills while they are young, not when they're paying a lot of money for college or when livelihood is on the line once entering the workforce and supporting themselves. Charity Dorsey, Shelton, Washington, Mason County resident, parent of an SHS student. Those are the only comments to the board.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Always appreciate the public sharing their thoughts. Now we'll move on to board member comments. Who would like to go first? I'll nominate. Go ahead, Sally.
Well, well, with my compromised audio, I think I will forego comments.
It's got a high-tech sound to your comments, Sally. Alrighty. Thank you very much. Carrie?
Yes, and I'll keep mine short, too. I was very thrilled that uh June 19th came and that was the end of the online distance schooling for my daughters. I did very much appreciate seeing all of the moving on ceremony videos that were put out there. Um, I thought that those were really well done. And I I just want to thank all of the staff, the teachers, everybody that put in a tremendous amount of effort. Um, the parents that stepped up and became teachers, the students for working in an environment that you know, was was uh just brand new and not something they expected and they got through it. And then today, the culmination of that, seeing Shelton High School's graduation. Um, and I just want to congratulate all of the graduates there. And it was really wonderful to be able to stand there. And I wasn't able to be there for the entire ceremony, but I was there from about noon until the end. And um, it was really great to see the family so excited and just be able to be a, you know, a little bit more participating in the ceremony. And I did get to talk to one of the administrators who was at the very end, who was getting a lot of the family comments after they had gone through the whole thing. And he said it was overwhelming that they were very thankful for what they had an opportunity to do, even though it was not your typical graduation ceremony. And even though it was quite hot towards the end of the day, it was really nice to have the sunshine and not have the rain. And it the pictures of the new school behind it looked fantastic. So I think the kids really appreciated and the families appreciated being able to actually be there on campus again after abruptly leaving on March 13th. So all of that was really nice. So um, just congratulations to all the graduates in 2020. And thank you to everybody who put in such an effort to make that, make today happen.
And I would just like to say a thank you to everybody that makes every day happen. You know, this was a momentous day with graduation and congratulations to the class of 2020, but also the students, the families, staff and everybody that has a hand in making everything happen that happens every day. And with that, I will say we have no need of an executive session this evening, so we can move to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Alrighty. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Aye. See you, Sandy.
I'll see you.